Jeff, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Kelly, you ready? Called a regular Montego City Council meeting to order. We could do roll call, please.
Jerry Wonders?
Here.
Lisa Keel?
Present.
Susan Newhop?
Present.
Margaret Hires?
Here.
Laura LaGuire?
Yes.
Hal Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Here. Invite the audience to stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the light, in the United States of America, and in your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have been given an agenda. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Uh, yes. Make a motion that we add under general business, under letter D, the sale of Sheridan Street parcel.
Under seven D, sale of Sheridan Street parcel. Any other corrections or additions to the agenda? Or a motion to approve the agenda? Someone?
Second.
Thank you. All those, you okay?
Thanks.
Lisa and Laura. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Number five on the agenda is public comment about any agenda items. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Let me know if you would like to speak and use the microphone and give us your name and address. Okay. Number six on the agenda is approval of consent agenda items.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items as listed, including regular bills in the amount of $150,343.28, of which $20,605.61 are those two others.
Support.
Is there any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Newhop?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hires?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes. Number seven A, transfer of on-premise tasting room yet?
Okay. As discussed at the last work session, this is for the transfer of tasting room permit for Bardock Wells Meadery. Brendan Ferrieria of Opportunist is gonna take over that business. Has been working with Steve Hasted to purchase the business and the operation. So this is kind of the final step for him to formalize that paperwork with the state and then the rest of the transfer can start happening. That is here. If there's any last minute questions, but otherwise it's a formality so that he can move forward with getting that license from the state.
Is there any questions for Jeff? Or a motion?
I move that we approve the transfer of premises tasting room permit on the Bardock Wells Meadery. Support.
Now, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman LaGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhop?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hires?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes. Number seven B, Jeff?
Seven B, tax foreclosure property purchase. So annually, the county submits to local municipalities those parcels which are available for public use, public purchase by that municipality. There was one on the list this year. It is a vacant parcel located on the end of the old Pauling Street. Photo in your packet is probably much better than what you're seeing on the screen. But this was the original development. Most of those are 1950, 1960 ranches before the city did the extension of Pauling Street. So looking at that last parcel in the original... Let me grab it down here. So last parcel in that original subdivision. And the reason why this might give interest to the city is when we worked with the school to create the new parcel splits up to extend Pauling Street, there was also a platted street that was developed off to the east and then south so to create another area for future lots and development. In doing that, the city actually had to put in a stormwater basin. This basin actually sits right within that road right-of-way that was platted, so right within this section here. So this would allow by the city purchasing that if this becomes developed, we can actually move that stormwater off that right-of-way so that we can utilize that right-of-way for future development. And this is kind of that aerial photo again. So this is the property line for the new development. The old property line for the right-of-way is probably about right here and then this would be the vacant parcel. So it just allows the city to have more flexibility once the development happens to the east there. Because it is a tax foreclosure process and the city does have to pay a portion of the back taxes as well as some closing costs, for the city, that cost is $2,953.72. Can answer any questions on that purchase?
Questions or a motion?
We are gonna use that property for... Can you tell me again what?
It would eventually be used for this stormwater basin here. So right now, the stormwater from the new section comes down the road and then goes into this basin here. But that's also within that platted road right-of-way. So that stormwater basin sits right about here, so right in the middle of that right-of-way. So if this street is ever developed, we would have to move that basin anyways, whether that would be further down this way. By acquiring this property, then we could simply shift it to the south, not as far of a distance. So we would still keep it in public use and allow us to develop that street in the future.
I move that we go forward with the city purchasing the tax-foreclosed property at 9290 Pauling Street.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hires?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhop?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes. Number seven E... Excuse me, C, Jeff?
Uh, seven C, this is a little bit of a formality. If the council wants to move in a different direction. Michigan Municipal League every year does their trustee election. They have a nominee committee that actually recruits people to serve on that board. Including in your packet is that list of their nominees for this year. Usually, the city just affirms the work and sends in a ballot for all those that they propose to be elected. There are no other open positions. Council can also say, "We'd like to go a different direction." Otherwise, we just need to affirm this and then staff will send this in to Michigan Municipal League.
Do you want us to sign the nominees or we can just do it from the city?
It's from the city as a whole.
Oh.
Given that I know nothing about any of these people to either say yes or no, do you have any input on any of these people or any reason that you would suggest a write-in candidate?
I would not. Just because they've already been vetted by that nomination committee. So they're looking also for different traits to serve in that role. You probably did note that it's a mix of not only managers from different municipalities, whether it's village, township, or city, and then also elected officials. So they do get a good mix of that composition of the board.
Questions or a motion?
And then by nominating, this basically goes in as our vote then?
Correct.
I move that we move forward with the MFL workers' Board of Trustee nominations. Support.
Now, is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman LaGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hires?
Yes.
Councilwoman Newhop?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes. And seven D, the one we added, Jeff?
Okay, seven D. So this is to finalize sale of a lot on Sheridan Street. So these were those lots that the city has had listed for five or six years. So this is Bowen Street, Sheridan Street dead-end, going, cutting back towards the bike trail. Approximately a year ago, the city sold the northern section of this property for $25,000. The southern section has been sitting there for a year and we have received an offer of $21,500. There was a couple other people interested, but they have never provided an offer. We've listed at $25,000 for four or five years. In reality, the sale is not as important as the development on that property. Though the component related to that, the city always puts restrictive covenants on the sale of parcels so that if they don't develop it within a timeframe and have a certain value on it, then it comes back to the city. So those restrictive covenants are also attached to the sale of this property. So the council would simply need to approve the sale at $21,500 and then give me the ability to close on that sale.
Can you go back to the map a second?
Yep.
So the space between Bowen and that, the red line, that's where the house... There's a house there now that was built a few years ago. Is that...
Yes, right here.
Right there?
Yep. So this is the Public Works, DPW, for out here.
Jeff, is that... What is that zone for?
Residential. So it can only be residential construction, even in the restrictive covenants, single-family residence.
Do you want a motion?
We need a motion to...
To accept the offer?
Yep, to accept the offer and allow me to close, allow the city manager to close on the property.
I move that we accept the offer and allow you to close on the property. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one point of discussion. I guess I have to go back to you because you've been managing this. Do you want to sell it for that price?
Yes. Like I said, I think the greater value of it is actually being developed. Yep, so not only water and sewer connection, but also the tax base that increases. It's in a residential area. That was one of the reasons it was originally listed in a residential.
Good, okay.
Is it a homeowner builder that is purchasing it?
Yes.
And what is the timeframe, Jeff? I can't read that.
Two years.
Any other discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Newhop?
Yes.
Councilwoman Keel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wonders?
Yes.
Councilwoman LaGuire?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hires?
Yes.
Mayor Roman?
Yes. Number eight on the agenda is public comment. It's open public comment. Again, no action will be taken, but we will receive your comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay? Number nine, city manager update, Jeff.
Okay. Quite a few items this evening. Mostly just short little updates. First of all, Cruze Inn. I did a mini poster there for you. So that is obviously up and coming, July 28th, last Friday in July. Coordination has been happening over the last couple months. So we are on pace for completing that. So make sure that you invite the friends and family and see everybody downtown. Wilcox Street reconstruction project. So this was from... On Wilcox, from Old Channel Trail to Cook. So we had bid out that project. Those bids have come back from the state and it is over the projected engineering cost by more than 10 percent. So we have asked the state if we can not move forward with that project at this time and rebid it in this fall. So we will rebid it in September. The feeling is both by staff as well as the engineers that it has to do with project timing. So we're looking for construction this fall. A lot of the contractors already have their projects lined up. So they are overbidding the project because they don't necessarily need it. So we can rebid it in September with... For, you know... If you really knew I was talking about something there. Rebid it in September so that we do construction spring, or summer of next year. Hopefully, we'll be closer to those engineering costs, if not below the original estimates. In doing this, the sidewalk subcommittee also met to kind of talk about how this impacts the Wilcox Street sidewalk. So we won't move forward with that this fall either because the grades for the street will impact the grades for the sidewalk. So I think at the next meeting, I'll come back with some discussion that that subcommittee has had and how that might move forward. Scott, did I miss anything else for that Wilcox Street? So kind of a good summary. Once we get bids back again, I'll let you know where we stand. So we don't forfeit the money. We don't lose the money. We just push the project to spring or summer of next year. Other item, senior village funds. So if you remember, as part of that, the subcommittee and then the council approves, approved creating the Healthy Initiatives Program, about $8,000. Looked at trying to allocate half for the VAC or the farmers market. I don't know if that's me or... Am I swatting at my hand? Very hand-talking tonight. So $4,000 for each, but also the discretion to be able to ship those funds if the farmers market became more popular or the VAC. Farmers Market Program was the most popular. In fact, we were all out of coupons for a year. So we spent about $750 on the VAC for those vouchers, then $7,250 on the Farmers Market Coupon Program. So basically, by the first week in July, they had all been passed out. So very popular program. So I guess we'll know that for next year. So yeah, probably not even two months. Well, we had three months of coupons available, but they ran out right at the beginning of the third month, so...
Is there any way of knowing how many people participated in that?
We'll probably have some numbers for it at the next meeting. We're kind of working on those details of how many individuals because some people only got a chance to do one month, some did all three. So we'll get those details for you. Heads up, at the August meeting, we will start looking at the certification for deer hunting again within the city. I know we had had some discussions on looking at parcels again this next year. So we're getting to be in that time of year. So at the August meeting, we will talk through that. We've had some interest by hunters already wondering what's going on with the program. So we'll get some information out on those parcels and look at certifications for this next year. Social District Subcommittee met as well. A couple updates there. And I did just get an update 10 minutes before this meeting. So Jimmy's finally did receive their permit from the state. Some of that discussion for the Social District Subcommittee was looking at what still needed to be done to open up the social district. So we needed to make sure that all our participating businesses had their license from the state. So as of 15 minutes ago, everybody has that. I need to get a copy of that. City has completed the initial amenities for that. We still have to put up some of the signage and look at moving a couple of the dumpsters. The big one that we are waiting for is all the businesses need to submit an updated certificate of insurance. So according to city's policy, there needs to be specific language on that certificate. All the businesses were emailed everything that I'm talking through right now. So it's not a surprise to them. So we need that information on file with the city. And then there was some discussion on the social... The cost of the social district cups. So I'll kind of walk through that discussion a second here and then if council wants to provide some additional comments. The concern was with the cup charge at approximately... Now, the council had said a dollar or kind of that closest cost of... The cost of the cup plus 50 cents. So it ended up, the cups will cost city 44 cents and then the 50 cents is to help cover the cost of the amenities and to manage the social district. So the actual cost is then 94 cents a cup, so just below a dollar. The concern, I think, by the businesses is then they have to feel that they might have to add additional costs because they have to manage the social district as far as cleanup. In my opinion, that's kind of a new point because they actually already signed a management agreement that said that that was part of the social district, what they would have to do as part of that management plan for the council to approve it. There had been then some discussion, what if they purchased the cups themselves? So feeling is that they could get the cups for 22 cents and then there's 6 cents for the social district sticker, 6 cents for their business sticker. So that's at 34 cents. So it's only 10 cents less than the city is paying for an already prelogoed cup. So 34 cents plus 50 cents is 84 cents. So the cost is not that much different. City does have 10,000 cups on hand to distribute. Again, the intent of that 50 cents is to recover the cost that the city is putting into the ongoing management of it. But also, between the city and DVA, we will expend $40,000 in the first couple of years around tables, garbage cans, umbrellas, lighting, all kinds of different things. So that is... I mentioned it here and maybe when we go onto the work session, we can talk about it some more. So that's a little update. And then the last one is vacation. I will be on vacation the first week of August, leaving this Saturday directly after Cruze Inn. So I'll be gone that entire week. I think that's all I have at this point for my update.
Questions or comments for Jeff?
Jeff, back to the deer hunting.
Yes.
Are we... Do we make an effort to contact people that own pieces of property that would fall within the guidelines of that? Try to push them to get involved or...
We did the first couple of years and then there was not a lot of interest. I think those that wanted to enroll knew about it anyways because we actually had articles in the paper. We had along Anderson Road, three properties that combined to meet the six-acre minimum. And then they decided that they didn't want to do it anymore. There's only about 10, maybe 10, 10 to 12 locations in the city that would meet that six-acre minimum.
One other question. Back to the cup cost on the social district. I don't like to think that we need to do everything the way Whitehall does, but I'm curious what Whitehall charges their businesses for cups and have we looked at what some of the other... Somebody told me that we're in line with what Muskegon does and I don't know if that's true or not.
Yep.
I'm curious if we've talked to other municipalities?
Yep, so the two others in the area that are in the county that are doing it right now, Muskegon and Whitehall. Whitehall does not have a cup charge. Businesses simply have to order the cups with the same state criteria. It has to be no greater than 16 ounces, has to have the social district logo and then the business logo on it. But they also didn't do kind of an expanded amenities within that corridor and that they put the burden on the businesses. So that's whatever their costs were. The city of Muskegon, it's 75 cents per cup, but they don't purchase the cups. So the business still has to purchase the cups and then they pay the city 75 cents on top of that per sale of a cup. So it's zero. We'd be at 50 and then 75 cents.
Whitehall isn't recouping any money or anything through the program?
That's my understanding.
Yeah. I... I wasn't at the meeting. I apologize for not being there, but it just seems that... I don't want the city to lose any money off this situation, but it seems like we're... We've got the cost up there pretty high and I'd like to make sure that these businesses can make it. I don't know what everybody else thinks about it.
Are we gonna continue the conversation now or take it to a work session?
I would say let's bring it to the work session.
Okay.
I have another question for...
I'll discuss them then.
If I can. So you're not recouping any of the costs? Or do you buy tables and umbrellas and all that stuff too? You have that big outlay of cash that we're...
We haven't spent any money on anything associated specifically with the social district.
Any other questions or comments for Jeff? Okay. Number 10 on the agenda is message and communication for myself and council members. Jerry?
No.
Laura?
Um, I don't know how many attended both fireworks shows or one or the other in the city. I was pleasantly surprised with the fireworks from the city. I wasn't sure what to expect. I think it was a good show. I think it went off very well. I also think the one on the third was a wonderful show as well. So I'm hoping that maybe we can find a way to kind of collaborate these two different shows and make almost a fireworks weekend or Fourth of July holiday because I think the area is benefit from both shows going on. But thank you, everybody, for helping out with those. It turned out really nice at that.
Thank you, Laura.
I wanted to say too, nice job on the fireworks. Very cool.
Susan?
Good, thank you.
Okay. The only thing I have is we have a solid waste meeting here tomorrow. It's just our regular quarterly meeting. Number 11 on the meeting, excuse me, on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
I move... Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will have a short break and then a three-minute break and then we'll go right into the work session.
So why are we...
Why are we getting so involved? Do you have to... Is this a lot of people in the area? I guess a lot of the surveyors.
Well, see, to me, in my mind, the...
Yep.
Because if this never happened, they never...
Yes.
Is it... Aliens are separate projects. Be used by everybody in the country. Not just the people who go in bars.
Right, right.
We'll wait for your phone.
Called the work session to order and I hope we have some presentations. Jeff?
Yeah, so... Yeah, so, so this evening, we have Alex from Muskegon Conservation District is going to talk through mute swan control program. I did include your packet, that original resolution regarding that mute swan program. So have some slides that she's going to talk through, and I think everybody not only got the information from your packet, but also I sent the link for the article from USDA as well. So I did print out a couple extra copies, if anybody would like a copy of that. So I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, yeah, I'm Alex. I'm a project manager at the Muskegon Conservation District, so I just have a quick little spiel about the mute swan kind of calling program that we partnered with the USDA with. So we kind of have our little mission statement on there. Obviously, our overarching goal is to conserve and protect our, our natural resources for overall public good and long-term stewardship. Our role in this whole process is just kind of as the, the liaison between the USDA and the public. So the Conservation District, us, we're basically just kind of the middlemen in the process. USDA is in charge of it, and they perform the, the actual calling and have the statistics and everything on it. We're really just kind of the, the permit holders, and then we're here for, for questions and to represent at, at things like this, basically. So yeah, just kind of some backgrounds on the mute swans in general. They are an invasive species. They were introduced in the U.S. in the 19th and early 20th century. They, they were brought over as basically ornamental things to put in, kind of more like wealthy people's ponds, is basically why they brought them over, just to look pretty, basically. And then they have really blown up since they brought them over. They are very, very successful in their breeding. They have, on average, five to six eggs per breeding pair. Not all of those tend to survive, but once they do reach, at least their early adulthood stage, their, their survival rate is really high. They don't have a lot of natural predators in, in our area, in our region. They're from Europe and Asia, and they don't have natural predators here. So really, the mortality in breeding adults is 10%. So it, their population, it stays high. They, when they were introduced, they put them in ponds and city parks and zoos and things like that. But as the population has grown, they have pushed more out into our more natural areas, which is where, where it's becoming a lot more of an issue, that the population is so large. If they were just staying in those ponds, it wouldn't be an issue, but since they're moving more into our natural areas where more of our native waterfall species are, are living, that's, that's where there is a lot more crossover, and it's a lot more of an issue that the population is large. So one of the biggest issues with the mute swans specifically is that they're incredibly destructive. They feed on submerged and emergent aquatic vegetation. And what they do is, like, while they swim around, they tear up all of that subaquatic vegetation as they're feeding. It's kind of a strategy to, to feed their young, but basically what they're doing is destroying a lot more than they even need to eat. So because they're very, very large birds, they can eat up to four to eight pounds of plants a day, but they tear up double that. So in our, in our natural areas and our kind of precious little, like, wetlands areas, they just come in and kind of wreak havoc. They tear it all up, and if a mute swan, like, colony has kind of been through there, you can see it, because they've torn up so much of the aquatic plants. Those aquatic plants are super valuable in those, like, wetland ecosystems. It is fish habitat along with food for other waterfall species and invertebrates and a lot of other things. So all of that destruction definitely does take a toll on those more natural environments. And then there is research that shows that when they are in larger groups, they feed for even longer periods of the day, which just kind of amplifies the problem. The other main issue with mute swans, as most people know, they are an incredibly aggressive bird. They're highly territorial, especially during their breeding season. So the native species is the trumpeter swan that we have here in Michigan. The mute swans, they go through their breeding about two weeks earlier. So what tends to happen is that they get extra territorial during that time, and then the trumpeters get driven out of those, like, prime breeding areas, because they're already on that, like, highly territorial phase when the trumpeters are just kind of tagging behind, and they just get pushed out of those prime breeding locations and nest habitat and everything. They feed on exclusively the same food as, like, a lot of our diving ducks. So that's obviously an issue, because they go through a lot more than a lot of our diving ducks, because they're much larger bird. And then with all of the damage that they're doing, those valuable, like, overwintering areas are also going to see less birds come into them, because all of that subaquatic vegetation got torn up during the time that the mute swans were occupying that area. Other disadvantages of having mute swans or a large mute swan population, they are carriers of the normal, you know, avian issues or bacteria and things. They can cause swimmer's itch, salmonella, E. coli. With those, with those birds, like, bringing in those diseases, it's a lot higher of a cost having to monitor those things in the water. We have a large population of birds carrying those. It's gonna, it's gonna be a lot higher cost to clean up after them, to test for them regularly, to make sure that our beaches and waterways and stuff are in good shape for the people and the other waterfall that are using them. There is, there are some studies that show that they do, they can affect agriculture as well. It's not nearly as common. You don't see a run in this area, at least you don't often see mute swans in fields, but it could be a thing if their population got to a point where they even needed to, like, be driven out of our waterways and into the fields. So it can be a potential cost to farmers in that way as well. This is kind of a list of the potential methods of controlling them. They, they have tried a lot of these things. You can oil their eggs during the incubation period, so they just don't hatch. That's, that makes it so that the, they don't rebuild a nest. If you just destroy the eggs, they'll come back and they'll just rebuild their nest and lay eggs again. That's a pretty labor-intensive procedure and has shown to not be overly effective, because, like I said, they're very successful breeders. So doing that one year, you're gonna have to do it every year for that breeding pair. Fertility treatments are not, not an option. You can use frightening devices, but it doesn't tend to be a long-term solution. It's the same as kind of repellents. As we've seen with a lot of waterfall, they can be scared away for a period of time, but they usually come back in. Toxicants are not, not an available method currently, and so kind of come down to the calling method, which is what the USDA tends to use the most, because it has been shown to be the most effective. They, yeah, they have teams that, that do the procedure, and they're very well-trained and effective at it. So why use this method? No negative impacts on non-target species, like with a lot of those, it could potentially, if you're scaring away mute swans, you're probably scaring away your other waterfall. If you're using other methods, you're probably affecting the other waterfall as well. This method has shown to be the most cost-effective, and in the long term, will end up killing the least amount of birds with a high, like, intensity calling program for a period of So this is end of the population numbers over time. They really kind of started the program more intensely in, like, that 2013, and they did see a drop. I think there were a few periods where they didn't have as much, let me just go to the next slide. This shows the number removed every year, and then the population estimate. So over time, we are seeing a gradual decrease in the overall population, which is what the DNR's goal is. So USDA and the DNR both worked together on this, and their, their goal is, that's on the next slide, but yeah, you can see that the, the population did drop after those, those times of more intense calling. And then when there's less, it has a tendency to jump back up. So yeah, the DNR's goal is by 2030 to have our Michigan population under 2,000 birds. And it's, obviously, it's a whole statewide program that is hoping not to eliminate the population, but just to get it to a level that's a lot more manageable and not going to do nearly as much damage on our valuable wetlands. We do have, or these are the other environmental agencies that have written letters of support of this program, that have given their endorsement to the overall, the program locally and statewide. And, yeah. Is there more to this? Yeah, that's, that's kind of our part in the program, and why at the Conservation, we support, Conservation District, we support it, and kind of why we are pushing this. Any questions for me?
Where's the highest population within Michigan?
Um, you know, I don't know specifically where the highest population is. I don't have the numbers from the USDA. They might have it in that packet that we handed out, but I'm not sure if they have that specifically, because yeah, the program is mostly, they give us numbers statewide, so I'm not sure.
Other questions?
What is the most popular way of calling currently? I know there's several listed, but do you know which is the most widely used currently?
It is the, like, the sharpshooter method.
Sharpshooter?
Questions, comments? Do you want to leave the questions? Okay. I just have a lot of comments.
Okay.
And this came, I, I talked about this in May, and my deep concern about this program and my disdain for it. I put in front of you an article that was in the M-Live about invasive swans in Muskegon. There are quotes in here that are so, that I think you need to know, that the local populations keep coming back and forth. Muskegon has decided not to call. Other lakes around here also, other communities have decided not to cull. We talked about this fact 10 years ago. There is no gate on this lake. There's no bubble over the top of it. The swans come in, they will keep coming in. They like this lake. There are also no conclusive studies at all on what this lake can handle and what it can't. There's nothing. They are, in my opinion, they are shooting in the dark. And despite the large numbers of geese, of swans that are being killed, they say, in this article, Ms. Rush says, they've had minimal impact on it. Okay? So here's what I want you to think about. If you approve this resolution that gives them five more years of killing, they have had 10. They've had no success. They want five more. And again, 10 years ago, we talked about this. Once you buy into this, this is a perpetual annual killing program. That's what you've got here. And is that what you want here? Is that what you want going on, on this lake? In the dead of night with sharpshooters? When it's already proving to not work? And when there are no conclusive studies? I want you also pleased to think about information that we have about trumpeter swans, which is the swan that is native. It has the same habits. It pulls up food. It scrubs up food from the bottom with its feet to feed it, so that it floats to the top to feed its young. It does the same thing. It's a bigger bird. The trumpeter swan is bigger than the mute swan. It eats more, its cygnets eat more. So think about that. I am so tired of hearing this bird referred to as an invasive, aggressive, alien species. It is a swan. It lives and breathes. And to, to run this campaign around this swan, where you can't even use the word "kill", you have to use the pretty word "cull", and I think we start using the word "kill", because that is what they're asking here, to kill it, year after year. They talk about the fact that it is aggressive. It defends its territory, it defends its young. When did we stop penalizing wildlife? Because they defend their territory and they defend their young? I find that shameful. If you look up what the National Wildlife Federation lists as the five major causes of habitat loss, here's what you'll find. Number one, agriculture, and a lot of that happened decades ago, when prime, prime habitat was being converted into fields, into crops. Right now, what's happening is there's pressure to redevelop conservation lands for high-priced food and bio crops, biofuel. Land conversion for development. If you've lived around this lake for more than 10 or 15 years, you've seen this. People, cottages are going away, large houses are being built, green lawns are going in, seawalls are going up, and they have a development like Tannery Bay that just put in over 700 feet of beach. Complete habitat destruction. Water development, this does not seem to be so much of a problem here, but this is where dams and other ways of diverting water are minimizing habitat. That has not been a problem here so far. Pollution, it's huge in this lake. We've all seen it. We've seen it, we've seen it for more years than I've been here. In particular, untreated sewage. We know we've got fertilizers and pesticides that come down from the agricultural fields up north. And finally, climate change, significant to disrupting habitat. Nowhere in their list of five are swans listed as a major, major cause of habitat loss. Page two of that document that Jeff kindly forwarded to us, there are a couple of things in there, and again, this is the kind of thing, the information that were sent that I find absolutely mad. They list one incident in Maryland, a large molting flock of mute swans caused a colony of least turns and black skinners to abandon their colony. Okay, Maryland, and one incident. Why are they talking about these single incidents? And then asking us to apply that information to what we have going here? I find that really dismaying, and I find it not particularly balanced. There's also, on that same page, number two, they talk about bird strikes with aircraft. And they list eight strikes with swans between 1994 and 2011. Eight strikes with swans. That sounds pretty terrible, doesn't it? If you look up what the figures are here, Federal Aviation Administration will tell you that there are an average of 47 aircraft strikes with birds every day in this country, every day. And of those, it's ospreys, it's geese, it's eagles, it's, it's birds of prey. It's often waterbirds, because that's where a lot of airports have been built. Forty-seven a day, and we are worried about eight in 17 years. I find that kind of thing, I find it sounds like they're trying to convince us of something, and they're trying to cause a bit of hysteria around something that has completely lost perspective. Jerry, did you want to say something?
Yes, I did. One thing we don't know is how many of those we would have more if this didn't happen. So you think it doesn't do any good, but getting rid of some also gets rid of the babies that will be born. So I think it's, to say it doesn't do any good, I don't really think that necessarily can be said for sure, because we don't know what would happen if, if these weren't being... can be said for sure because we don't know what would happen if, if these weren't being killed each year. So I'm not opposed to it because I think, you know, these type of things do keep things in control. But, so I think we need to look at all the, that too, and some of the data on that side of it is missing because we, that is something you can't really quantify.
And the same article said, they, they call 1,000 a year. They kill 1,000 a year. So imagine 1,000 more.
Nissen pride in Michigan.
So if you're calling 1,000, you're really, it's more than that.
And 75 in White Lake last year. Imagine 75 more.
Because I don't know how many babies have, if you look at these pictures, it looks like they have quite a lot of babies at one time. So it's really a larger number than just 75. So I think that's one thing that can't be quantified and that, that could lead to a bigger problem if it isn't managed on an annual basis. It's just like the deer. If you don't manage them on an annual basis, they keep having babies, that's when they take over the town. So I think it's, I don't, I just don't think it's a bad thing.
Well, and Jerry, you bring up a really good point. We don't know. We don't know. There is no data.
That's right. That's why I don't, that's why I don't agree with what you're saying because you're saying that doesn't do any good, but there's, we don't know that. If you take out 1,000 swans in Michigan that are going to have, I don't know, six babies apiece, that, that's got to do some good to keep this under control.
What we don't know is how many more swans come in because we just took out 75. There's no data on what this lake will support.
And can you imagine if those came in and you didn't get any, get rid of any, then we would have a real big problem? So I, I don't think we're going to agree on this.
Well, I think what we need to look at is, is the fact that there isn't any data. There isn't. We don't know what this lake will support. We don't know how close swans will live in proximity to each other.
I don't think we want to find out too, how bad it can get either. So I think, I don't think it's a bad thing. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Can I make one more comment about articles like this one? I also am real tired of reading about hypotheticals about saying there is the potential for this to happen. This might happen. This could happen. There is no data. So you come in with a killing program, you expect us to adopt it and to support it. You're spending tax dollars to do this. After 10 years, you're asking for five more. And, and what else? And still, no data. No studies, nothing.
I have a couple of comments. I think that success isn't with fewer birds. I think we saw on the chart up there that when they kill more, there's fewer in the next year. To me, that, that determines success. I also think that your mission is long-term stewardship of the land. I think we need to keep in mind that not just the swans, all, all the critters out there. And that if we're advocating for animals, we need to advocate for resources as well as all animals. It's about balance and web of life. These birds destroy habitat, they cause pollution. And the biggest thing to me is that they, that they drive out loons, common loons. I mean, I heard a loon on White Lake, I don't know, four or five years ago. How nice to have loons back on White Lake. And I think that natives, they fight for every square bit, every square inch of habitat they can have, and we need to support the natives.
Other comments?
No, I think you made, make a good point that success isn't necessarily defined as all of the swans being gone, right? Success is showing up, a regulation or trying to stabilize a number in an area. And you're right, we don't know what the lake can support. We don't know how many boats it can support, right? But we regulate by permits, the amount of boats that go on the lake. So I think there's some good in the program.
Can I add a comment? I know that there's a lot of concern getting these documents about, about other ducks and wilder waterfowl. I think it's real interesting that the DNR continues to issue hunting permits for this area for waterfowl, for terns, for regansers, for teals, for everything else. Wouldn't you think if there was a concern about the swan's impact on other waterfowl here, that they would stop the hunting program? But it's as vibrant and robust, and if you wake up on a phone warning on a Saturday, you're going to know it. Hunters are out there en masse. There is no move to reduce the number of waterfowl killed in this lake by human beings.
That's a separate issue, though. I mean, if we take up.
But it's not because they're talking.
Yeah, that's a separate issue. Let's take up that issue. I agree. Let's get rid of hunting.
But what, but the point that I'm making is that they talk about what this is doing to other waterfowl. My point is, if they were worried about the swan's impact on waterfowl, why aren't they doing the most basic thing, which is to stop hunting those waterfowl that they think are so rare? And, and, or, or so endangered by the swans? The other thing is, this lake is not a loon-loving lake. Loons are shy birds. Saturday afternoon, Paul and I drove through the parking lot down at the, at the boat launch. There were more than 100 trucks and trailers, boat trailers parked there, parked all the way back up to the farmer's market. This is a busy lake. We used to be a cottage lake. We used to have people here from first of June till the end of August. It's not the nature of this lake anymore. It's a crazy, busy lake with a ton of boats on it and jet skis and people. And it's not a lake that shy birds want to come to.
It's not about the mute swans, though.
But what I'm saying is, mute swan isn't keeping out the loon.
They are. They're driving them away.
I think we need to move on.
So I have a question for you. This article that, I believe you should, this was back from April, has Muskegon Lake still, I'm going to call it banned, or are they calling there now?
Thank you.
Are they doing any calling in Muskegon Lake at the present time?
Not at the present time. It's something that's in the works that we've been in communications with them over, but it just hasn't been asked yet.
All right. So Susan has brought up a lot of points and there's been some other comments here. Is there anything that you would like to add?
Just, I guess that, yeah, obviously, at the Conservation District, we're, we're big supporters and endorse of, or endorses of the native species. We love wildlife. We love, we love birds. I'm a big, big birder myself, but I want to see, you know, the native birds and I wanted to see them thrive. And, yeah, I guess just in this case, you hate, you, you do, you hate to endorse killing something, but when that thing is making the quality of what, like, our beautiful waterways that we have in these areas worse, it's, it's worth it in the Conservation District's opinion.
Jeff, I believe this was on a previous meeting and we moved it to a work session tonight so that we could have this discussion. Is this discussion at a place where we should?
Yes, and then, oh yeah, kind of the front gray work and door there. Do just some more cleanup, maybe some little bit of tuck pointing, but not the extent that we realized once we got into it.
I mean, it's probably been a while since maintenance was performed on that building.
Yeah, I think last time it was power washed and I think the boys, Scott's opinion of that, something in Boy Scout project.
I figure she's over 100 years old. She needs a little facelift.
So is everybody's impression that this should go on the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay. I think you see a lot of heads saying yes, Jeff. Number three of the work session is public comment. Again, public comments, please let me check comments, the three minutes, and use the microphone if you would.
Mayor, yeah, we're going to jump back to the social district for a little bit. I think we kind of cut the comments off during the regular meeting.
Okay, it's a work session.
Well, I just had a question on, we talked about the 50 cent per cup, and if I understand what you were saying earlier, that even if the businesses buy their own cups at the 22 or 23 cents, the city was still going to tack on the 50 cent charge for the management of that?
Right.
Now, it was my understanding that the management of the social district was pretty much up to the businesses? So other than the amenities of the tables and chairs, which I understand are going to be there if there's a social district or not, what, what is the other portion of the management that the city is looking to cover?
So it's largely the amenities, but the management part is more of the safety of that because we are going to have additional police time down there. So the administration component of the social district, also just all of this stuff, like continuing to work with the state to make sure that paperwork's filed. You know, we'll never recoup what we've spent, but we will have some ongoing activities to keep this moving. The management part, from the businesses' side of things, is basically going out once a day, making sure that the garbage is picked up. If it needs to be put in the dumpsters, put in the dumpster, wipe the tables. That's it.
And the people, right? They're responsible for the people, was my understanding from our conversations.
Yeah, they're responsible for that to actually have the license. So that's not even us, that's the state saying that they need to manage their people.
Right, right.
And that, so anybody else from the subcommittee, I don't know if you want to share comments, thoughts that we had among the meeting?
Well, we were talking about, because we have to wait until they get the insurance. Well, now we got Jimmy's okay. That was one, that wasn't in place when we met. And they have to do that insurance thing before, so we still have that before it can open up. But we want to keep moving forward with the alley and maybe have like a grand opening on the alley if this takes long to get the social district finalized. Because the alley will be used, hopefully, for, you know, during the day for different groups or people go and have lunch there and things. So, and just to make people aware that the alley is there. It's not just there for the social district because we want everybody to feel like they can use it. So we were talking about having some kind of like grand opening type thing.
I love that when you came up with that idea, Jerry, that we do a grand opening regardless of who's, regardless of whether the alcohol-serving part of it is in place, so that it's a place. It's a new place to come in and be and take a lunch or have a picnic, bring your dog, whatever. I thought that was just a really good idea.
Yeah, and if you do it, if you just say, well, it's the social district, then people are going to think, well, then I don't really care about it. But if you make it, you know, grand opening for anybody that can use it and make everybody aware of it, then other people will use it. It won't be just considered as just a place to drink on the social district type thing. So, you know, it's, it should look pretty cute and stuff.
We also talked about a name for the alley. We don't have a name for it, and we'd like to do something that would give it a name.
Well, I guess that's part of the, sorry about the, interrupt the name, but I guess that's why I feel that we should reconsider the 50 cents because now the alley's going to happen no matter what, right? We, we took that idea from the guys that wanted to start a social district, and now we're going to make it a downtown city area for lunch, for everything else, but we're tacking that 50 cent onto those poor businesses to try to help to recoup that money. So I'm just asking that we, that we look at trying to make it more cost-effective for them.
We were planning on developing the alley before the social district.
Right. The alley was going to be developed.
They didn't start the alley.
Okay, so just gave it a little kickstart then, maybe. But either way, I just, I just would ask the committee reconsider that.
Well, we can always reconsider. We can, you know, we're going to re, we're going to look at the social district thing. I think you can't put a year, I think that's what we said, we reevaluate it. So everything will be looked at again in a year anyway, so things can change.
Assuming they all agree to the dollar now, because if they don't come forward and don't want to pay a dollar because they're going to tack that onto the prices, we're going to sit with all those cups anyway.
I think everything has startup costs and I think everyone shares startup costs. I mean, the city isn't for a big model. It's going to benefit the businesses. They should be stepping up and sharing in the startup costs.
I don't think they're not wanting to step up. I think it needs to be reasonable. I mean, we're charging more than downtown Muskegon that has, you know, a lot more resources than what we do.
Well, we really aren't charging more than Muskegon because they have to buy their cups, so they're already buying the cups. Then they have to pay.
I bet they're getting a lot better than 25 cents a cup.
But they're still paying more, even, so they're still paying more with that. So.
I guess that's all I can do is ask that the cost is reconsidered because I think it's high.
Other comments? Now we can try number three, public comment. Anybody has a public comment to open public comments?
County cram serves. My address is 5955 Eilers Road in Montague Township, but I also rent in the town of Montague at 8638 Sheridan Street, apartment one. If we go through with the mute swan killing or calling, I would call for monitoring the, the results of that because whenever you do any kind of conservation practice, it is, behooves us to have results so that when it comes up for discussion next time, you have the data that says, yes, it worked, or no, it did not work in our area. And I heard the numbers in Michigan, but I think if we're going to go through with it, knowing that other municipalities and wetlands are not doing it, then you might want to reconsider doing it another time. But data is so very important. How that gets done, I don't know, but I probably could come up with some ideas with volunteers and we could, and then saying, what is a success? Define the success. What is it that you're intending to do? You know, what species do you want to see increase? What species? And that could be monitoring macroinvertebrates, it could be monitoring fish, it could be monitoring other waterfowl. Is it truly going to affect lots of different organisms and the habitat? So you hear me saying, I'm not for it or against it. I'm saying if you're going to do a conservation practice, it behooves us to do the monitoring. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to go back here. Jeff, do we need to poll everybody to see if we're going to bring your cups back to a different, another meeting?
Sure. Come on, discuss.
Jerry? Yes? No?
Yes.
No? No. Yes. Okay. I think we have four numbers, so. Number seven on the work session is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you do the adjourn, thank you all, the audience for.